You guys give me the high sign when you're, when you're good to go.
Okay.
Eric, can you see my screen?
Good.
Good.
I can, I, yeah, I can see your, you've got the line out open.
Oh, no, wrong screen. Let me, uh, I should have, uh...
He did, he did.
About now. You see the Bozeman, uh, you've got a Word document opener, it looks like.
There you go.
Yep. Yeah, you might want to zoom in on that a little bit to make it easier to read. I could see it.
Can you zoom in on the first time the volume down on this computer?
Yeah, we should have that volume down on our computer.
It's off. Not, not, I mean, not as if it's...
And for the folks in the county, just give me, uh, give me a holler when you can hear us fine and you're all set up. We can get going.
Why can't we mute that?
I don't know, because it's actually muted on the computer.
It's muted on everything.
Okay. We'll just go ahead with...
I'm not sure if they can hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you, John.
Oh, excellent. Good, good, okay. Are you guys ready or all?
We're ready to go. Let's go for it.
Yeah.
You're just gonna have to kind of listen to the coast. The going is just turned up as I can get it.
I think you're still on mute.
Yeah, we're ready to go. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, sure. Well, let me do a real quick introductions. Uh, I'm John Papsec. Uh, I run the alternative contracting section for MDT. I'll, I'm currently managing this project and also, uh, and joining me are Eric Miller and Beth Tappas and then, uh, my boss, Darren Reynolds. And so, uh, from here in, I have Commissioner, uh, Olberg. Oh, actually, can you let me know who's there?
Uh, yes, here you have Commissioner Folkward, Commissioner Delger, our clerk, Ann Browser, um, Nicole Brown, who is our, uh, planning and community development. And we, and we also have, uh, our new commissioner-elect, Debbie Randolph, here.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Uh, congratulations, Ms. Randolph. So, we'll go ahead and get going. Uh, Phil Fogarty could not make it. He's our district administrator for the Buick District. Um, and so, uh, really, just to kind of start from, from the very beginning, we wanted to make sure that the counties and the other major resource agency, MDT, were aware of this project, understood what the project was about. The last thing we want, you know, to have happen to you guys is to be surprised and not know what's going on in your county. Um, and so, this is our opportunity to kind of brief you on, um, on the project and answer any questions you might have or concerns. Um, I'm not, uh, I'll, I'll, I have a, a kind of a brief agenda I'll go through real quick. I didn't send it to you, but, um, so we, um, without further ado, and you guys stop me anytime you want if you have any questions. Um, but the Department of Transportation is undertaking the process of replacing the Bozeman Rest Area located on North 19th Avenue with a new facility. Uh, it was decided that the new, and the Bozeman Rest Area, even though it looks real nice, uh, some people think it's even a little bit of a Taj Mahal. Um, it's still, it's, it's past, it's, it's approaching its, uh, youthful life. Um, there, it's a, it's, quite frankly, it's a bit of a maintenance nightmare, uh, for the, for the, for MDT maintenance. Uh, it's, um, it occupies a four, uh, little, about a 5.5 acre site. What we're doing is we're going to replace it with a new rest area within, uh, within a reasonable area. Uh, we've identified going through MDT planning and with the district, um, and other resources, that we, we want the rest area to be located along I-90. We want it at an existing interchange and, uh, and in reasonable location and, uh, uh, proximity of that interchange. Um, it has to be located on a state highway route, uh, whether it's a secondary or primary, uh, or, um, but be that as it may, we, and the, uh, the other thing is, is we, we found based on, based on experience, when you start putting the rest areas in an existing metropolitan area, they, they get, they get a lot of use from people you don't really want using them. Uh, a lot of transients, a lot of, lots of vandalism, so we, it was decided, and there's, there's plenty of other places for people to stop within the city. Uh, so it was decided that this, okay, this site would be located, uh, west of Belgrade. Uh, the Belgrade, I guess, would be Jackrab and Interchange. Uh, and, but no farther west than, um, uh, darn, I'm drawing a blank on the name. Um, the, um, oh, I'm drawing a blank. Anyway, uh, but anyway, just the, uh, McMillan Interchange, McMillan Interchange, which is located west of 287 or Wheat, Montana. The, the project, it was decided that, uh, the project would be, um, constructed or designed and built using MDT's design-build project, we, our process. And we typically do that process for all of our rest areas, uh, replacement program. The one different differentiation on this particular project is that normally we are, uh, replacing an existing rest area at the same location. In this situation, we are allowing the design builders to find a suitable site that is, again, meets all of the criteria for access, uh, accessibility. Um, they, they have to provide a site that can meet all the demands, the traffic, water, wastewater, uh, demands, and, uh, it has to be a formidable site, basically. So, we, we basically went out to a request for qualifications last summer, um, and, uh, for open solicitation for design-build teams to, to pursue the project. We got two responses. Uh, one of them was, uh, Rickert Development. They're a developer out of Bozeman. They are teamed with Diamond Construction as their builder and Dowell as their consultant. The second team is actually, uh, Town Pump, who has, as their contractor, Dick Anderson Construction and WGM, uh, is their engineer. The, both teams have, um, the contractors and the consultants are highly experienced, uh, firms that have done rest area work in the past for us, and they understand our process, and they understand the design-build restriction constraints. Um, and I will, I'm not gonna spend much time talking about the design-build process, uh, unless you would like me to explain it in more detail. Uh, but please let me know if you have any questions, but I'll kind of summarize it by saying that design-build essentially is, uh, it's, it's more of a, uh, promotes innovation, um, it's quicker delivery, um, and it's, uh, it is fairly, it's pretty cost-effective, uh, for the most part. The, the difference between design-build and design-bid build is, is simple, is real simple, that you actually hire the contractor who has their engineer on staff. The normal process is you hire the engineer to design the project, then you cut them loose and then start the, uh, the bidding process. And in this case, uh, we have, design-build is, is based, the selection of the design-build team is based on best value. So, we score the technical approach, their preliminary design and their approach. Uh, equates to 75% of the, their score, uh, their best value score. 25% is on price. Price is a little different for this situation because we're replacing an existing rest area. Um, but, you know, it's, in this case, we will award, uh, we, the payment to the contractor, and this is the other departure with this particular project. It's highly unusual, uh, to do this, but instead of a monetary payment to this contractor, whoever gets this project, instead of a monetary payment for a new rest area in kind, equal to or better than what we already have, um, is we give them, or we do a land transfer. They basically give us the, the land and the facility for the new rest area. We in turn hand over, quick claim, the, um, the Bozeman Rest Area site as it currently exists. It's then up to that developer, let's say it's Town Pump or it's Rickert, whichever one, um, it's up to them then to go through the subdivision process through the city of Bozeman. But at that point, we as MDT are out of the picture in regards to the design-build, the transfer of properties. In the end, what we're looking for is a brand-new rest area that meets all of the state-of-the-art or the, the requirements that we require for any new rest area in Montana. Uh, needs to meet our rest area plan, it needs to have all of the functionality to, um, uh, meet the current, the traffic demands. Uh, again, I mentioned water and wastewater, and that's kind of a big part of where you, your folks will come in, your sanitarian, as well as, you know, DEQ. So, we, so we're in the process now. We have shortened this to two firms. We will be receiving proposals from those firms on, in February, February 26, and then we will receive a, shortly thereafter, we'll score those proposals. We'll score them on their merit, on their, again, their innovation, their design, safety features, transportation, traffic, water, wastewater, efficiencies, and, uh, their schedule for completion. We will score those and then we'll go to, uh, once we've scored and approved those scores, then we lock those scores down, then we open up bids. Uh, we'll, we'll have a cost proposal date, and at that point, we will do a final, uh, or we'll do a, a best value calculation based on that 75-25 weighting to, uh, to select the best value firm. Final selection would be, uh, February 24th, uh, and we anticipate after notice, notice, uh, the award, commission award on, um, April, that we would, they would proceed with construction in June, uh, or May or June of, uh, 20, uh, 21. We, you know, they'll, they'll probably take, oh, three or four or five months to actually come up with their preliminary design. We could see construction at the site that would be, of the, the selected site in, uh, probably end of summer, uh, mid, midsummer to end of summer, with completion of the project, the new rest area in, uh, sometime in 2022. I think it's towards the end of 2022, October. Um, that's, I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit because I wanted to explain that, um, the, um, they're currently in that process of preparing their technical proposals. Um, and, um, they have, we have two, two proposers. I'm gonna go ahead and show the, the locations of those two sites. And I just want to make sure, can you see the, the map I have on screen?
Uh, yes, we can see it real well. Thanks, John.
Okay, great, yeah. Now, I'm jumping around here. I'm just trying to, again, if I'm, if I lose here or if I get ahead of myself, and I, I do that a lot, um, it would be, uh, please, let's go ahead and take a step back. So, as I mentioned before, and the other thing, the other reason I wanted to, I want to bring this up is that, um, you'll find, when we get into the discussion, that there's, there is a need for confidentiality. So, if you would please, uh, you know, not share these sites with anybody else outside of the county or with any of the firms that come in, because you will be hearing from, probably from both of these firms, if your sanitarian hasn't already heard from one or both of them. But right now, Town Pump is proposing, they have a 15-acre site just south of the existing Town Pump facility. This roughly outlines that location. And then Rickert Development, um, is proposing to build north of, uh, Wheat, Montana, and then I'm not exactly sure what this, I know the gas station's here, uh, whatever. They have 12 acres of site. My understanding is that Rickert's site, they are planning to connect into a future wastewater system located somewhere to the east, and I'm not that familiar, I'm sure not near as much as you guys are, with that development, but that is their proposal. They'll more than likely, my, I believe they're going to be proposing a well, uh, a potable water site, uh, a potable well on-site to provide the, the necessary demand requirements. Town Pump, um, we believe, I don't, I don't think they have any plans of pumping across. I don't know at this point in time. It's, again, I haven't seen their designs, and they haven't shared their specific designs with us, but I can only assume at this point that they'll probably have onsite treatment, septic, and again, a potable well somewhere. They, so they have to find water, and they have to be able to provide, uh, waste disposal meeting MDEQ requirements and as well as county sanitary, your, your county sanitarians' requirements. Right now, we have not seen designs from either one of these firms as of yet. That won't happen until February of next year. Um, but they, uh, they, they have to meet some very stringent requirements. Uh, like I say, DEQ requirements. One of the things that we're, and let me back up just a little bit. Normally, before we ever undertake a design-build project, um, this is a gentleman's, normally before we, uh, undertake a design project, we do a phase-one analysis because we'll know, we know the site. It's usually, again, a replacement of an existing facility with a new facility. So, we would hire a consultant. They would take a year to come up with the design, and they would prepare a phase-one analysis. That analysis would, would outline traffic demands, pedestrian demands, or fixture demands, uh, potable wastewater and water requirements. They would do preliminary geotech, everything. In this situation, because of the fact that we haven't specified a site, that's their job then. And normally, our process would take six weeks for them to prepare a technical proposal. We're giving them five months. And the reason for that is they have to do a lot of work, uh, literally hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of work to be able to, uh, come up with a design and justification for that design. They need to convince, in a nutshell, they need to convince us, you, and DEQ that they have a, a site that, again, meets the demands. They can't give us, they can't short us on, uh, volume, um, or capacity. Uh, we, we design our rest areas with a 20-year design life. So, they need to be able to project traffic out 20 years and then the, um, and then the, of course, the water and wastewater demands associated with that. Uh, again, I'm kind of referring to things that you're interested in, I think you're interested in. I'm sure you're obviously more interested in, in the whole, the project as a whole, simply because it appears that both teams have selected sites that are within Broadwater County. They could have very easily done that in a, or, um, but they both chose these, their particular sites. So, the anomaly and the reason I really initially wanted to talk to you guys is to, number one, preface, or, uh, essentially give you, uh, um, uh, an understanding of the project in preparation for these firms coming and talking to you. And they are gonna come talk to you. We encourage them to because they need to find out. Uh, there, there are certain things that they need to do, and, um, and one of them is in their proposal. They need to do what we call a phase-one A, uh, effort, and this is, again, this will be submitted. They need to undertake all of this. This is the information I sent over last week. Um, they need to be able to do their due diligence to, uh, basically coordinate with the county, coordinate with DEQ based upon, um, raw data and preliminary site designs to essentially convince themselves and convince us that they have, uh, that their site can meet the demands. So, if water's at, you know, 2,000 feet deep, well, they need to figure that out. And they need to, they need to convince themselves that they can get potable water out of the ground. Uh, and I have no clue what the water demand, or, you know, the, where the aquifers are at out here. They also need to make sure that they're not pumping into some gumbo clay, uh, that's, uh, that cannot, you know, you can't build, uh, a, a system with, a septic system. Again, we're, one of the things, or one of the things that we are, we are going to give them credit for is if they can connect to an existing system. And the reason for that is because we, you know, we're not, MDT's really not, uh, very equipped to manage wastewater systems. So, if we can have them connect, if they were in a metropolitan area or if they were in an area that has an, an existing wastewater treatment system, more power to them. Uh, and that actually makes us a lot happier if they can do that. Although, 99, or almost 100% of our past projects, with a couple of exceptions, have been in rural areas that don't have any type of wastewater. So, we left this paragraph, and I hate to call it broad, but essentially, what they need to do is they need to coordinate with the local agencies and provide us with some sort of, um, acknowledgement. And I don't know what that's gonna look like for you, because we've never done this. I don't think they've ever done it, nor have you done it. But they need to be able to go in and, um, essentially coordinate with your, uh, with Sean Rowland. Uh, and, and we're not looking for you to approve anything. We're not looking for approvals or permits at this stage. We're simply looking for feasibility and some concurrence that, yes, this project appears feasible. You're not committing yourself, obviously. You wouldn't let yourself be committed to, to approving something uh, without full plans, without going through the normal process. I just don't want you to be surprised, again, when two contractors, uh, or two engineers come in, Dowell and then WGM, and start talking to the counties and talking to county planning, and you're gonna go, wait a minute, there's, you know, your Dowell and WGM came in last week, and they have the same project, but it's down the road a piece. Um, and this, um, this is actually our opportunity, again, to hopefully, uh, not get, let yourself get cornered and not understand what's happening and what our proposal is and what MDT is proposing to do. So, um, I'll stop here and, um, and again, this is a little bit, it's not necessarily nebulous. It's just, they need to provide documentation that they've talked to you and that they've got, you know, they've got... Again, I, I don't want to say assurances. That's because I know you won't want to be agreeing or allowing yourself to be, you know, uh, uh, cornered or, or committed to approving something. Uh, it, really, that, that whole process of approval doesn't happen until they have a whole set of plans, specs, and estimates with the, uh, with all of the well data, all of the perk test data, all of the, um, uh, demand data, and the, the things that you would normally look at when you're approving a subdivision in the county. So, I, I will stop there and ask, is there any questions regarding this or, uh, any concerns?
Uh, John, this is, uh, this is Daryl. You know, you covered it really well. You answered some of the questions that I had wrote down, and, um, one of them being is, you know, who will provide the, the final go-ahead on that? And I guess it sounds like it's gonna be maybe between a couple of different entities, yourself, the county, and, and our sanitarium that are, that are going to, uh, say yes or no. Does that, does that sound right? Is that accurate?
Right. It is, actually. And, and my team, Beth and Darren and Eric, you guys, if you hear anything I'm speaking out of turn or misleading, please let me know. But, so, the first thing is we hire a contractor. We hire a contractor consultant team. Um, I was, and I offered this up earlier to Sean, and he'd indicated that you guys were interested, but we would, we would like to, uh, we would, uh, welcome your participation in, uh, as a non-scoring member, but as a local stakeholder, a key local stakeholder in the selection of a consulting firm. So, when we win those consultants, we're gonna see two technical proposals being submitted. And both, and I will warn you ahead of time, these proposals can be quite, uh, very, very detailed. We're not asking you to read every single word or go into detail. We would offer, though, that you can cherry pick and maybe work with your staff even to, to look at, uh, you know, hey, what does their site plan look like? Let's take a look at their, their phase-one A analysis, which, again, this is all part of, uh, the, this is all part of that initial delivery. So, in February, we're gonna get a copy of their, uh, phase-one A report. It'll be a portion of their proposal. And so, at that point, then, you, again, I'm not, uh, you, you might want to be looking at other things like traffic control and coordination planning and, and general plans in general. Uh, but you can cherry pick what you guys want to look at, and we would ask you to be part of that process to, as in, we call them advisors. We just finished up a project, Eric Miller has a project that we just went to final selection on, and we're gonna make, we're opening bids tomorrow for the Court-Splat Rest Area, which is located west of Missoula. In that case, we had Forest Service. They're a key stakeholder because Forest Service land is being impacted. In this case, I'm inviting, or we are inviting the county as well as MDEQ to participate and listen in to those discussions. Provide us your insights, your, and then, at that point, then, our technical review committee, we have an eight-member technical review committee, will take that, um, into consideration in their final scores. So then, uh, I'm getting really long-winded, but I just want to make sure I'm really clear on, on, on final selection. So, in March or April, we will have a consultant that will have their bid price, we'll have their technical, we'll get our best value score. We are then planning to award. Once they're done with that, once they got the project, they're awarded. Then they go to work. Now, they're under con, they're under contract with MDT, and we'll hold a contract with them, um, with all the proper bonds. Um, and they'll have a deadline, and I, I wish I had, I'll find that deadline, that actual deadline. They have a deadline that they need to meet. If they don't meet that deadline, then, uh, they've been advised, when we met with both sets of contractors, they've been advised that they are in breach of their contract, or we can terminate, which case means that if they don't meet the requirements, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's sort of a way to get their attention to make sure that they finish on time. We don't want this to drag them out. Uh, um, so, but, uh, we will then go ahead and, uh, award that contract. It usually takes anywhere from three to six months for us to actually see a final design and approved design. And this is all predicated on them having an approved environmental doc and approved, uh, all their permits in place, their right-of-way has been secured. Uh, they're, they have to meet certain really stringent criteria before we let them go to work. Uh, and we give them what's called a release for construction.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
Uh, if you're wanting the completion date, we had it set at October 31st, 2022.
Okay, okay. There you go. Thank you very much.
Good.
I appreciate that, yeah. And so, um, anyway, so I, I went ahead and handpicked just some, again, I can, I would have shared nine pages of scope. The, the entire document is, there are, request for proposals, about 58 pages long. So, it's, it's a rather cumbersome, um, pretty boring document. But, uh, be that as it may, you're sure welcome to see it if anybody has an interest. The, uh...
Hey, John?
I went through and, and I got, like...
John, this is Daryl. So, I do have a question on the, um, the initial technical design. Will that improve some of the, will that include some of the improvements that by, that most likely need to be made on 287 far as for, you know, getting off and on and into the rest area?
Yes, it will. So, let's say, for instance, they, uh, you know, we, we would have traffic, a northbound traffic wanting to turn left into the rest area. They will have to provide some sort of, uh, left-turn lane in there. Now, you know, we're, we need to make sure too, they just don't, uh, they need to make sure that they have the correct approaches, length of approach, transitions on both ends. So, uh, more than likely, they will provide traffic-related, uh, capacity improvements uh, in front of their site as well as upstream and downstream.
Okay, perfect.
Now, as far as like, you know, obviously, uh, I, I don't, as far as drainage is concerned, uh, you know, they will need to, like any other rest or any other development, you know, uh, and I, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, uh, the county would require, and we would require, um, that they, uh, that they maintain onsite retention or detention so that we, you know, we don't increase runoff to the downstream, uh, properties. Um, so essentially... So essentially they're going to have to provide some sort of, and we, we could do both, but if there's an existing system out there that they connect into, it could be a detention facility. If there isn't, then it'll more than likely be a larger retention facility. Again, it's, I can't speak for the sites because again, we haven't seen anything in, in regards to their design, their site layout.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a mic?
No. Let's see. Sure. So they'll have to do a systems impact, traffic analysis for a WB 67, that's a large truck design. So they'll, both their on, their street and internal circulation needs to meet those so that they're not, you know, cutting corners sharp. Like I said before, we prefer an existing public water wastewater system if it's available and they will get, they'll get technical points of credit based on that. Needs to be located outside of a floodplain. Again, we talked, we kind of jumped around, but you know, we definitely need to, in this case, we didn't know at the time, like it was in a city, it could have been in Manhattan probably. But since now the county is the governing agency, in your case, as far as land, the subdivision requirements, of course, MBEQ still has, you know, has that requirement. If there's any core, I don't think there should be any hard core restrictions or requirements or, but again, it depends on whether there's, you know, if there's floodplain that they're dealing with, then we've got to go through the appropriate agency. I don't think we need 124 permits, but again, I don't know at this point in time, but that's for them to figure out. I said 20-year design life, it's actually 30-year design life. So I was wrong there. They need to meet all ADA requirements. We do identify the minimum number of trucks and vehicles. We're looking at a single site, not like the, so if you've gone to Columbus or Great Cliff or you've seen sites at off-ramps, one on each side, we've elected to only require only one and we've done this before. Anaconda Rest Area is one of them. Conrad Rest Area is another one where one facility can handle both directions. We will, you know, once they remove the, or once the Bozeman Rest Area is, is transferred or once the ownership is transferred, so basically they hand us their key, we hand them our key. I mean, not literally, but you know, we'll go through, we have to go through a right-of-way process. But once that happens, then all the signs will be pulled. I mean, they will close the Bozeman Rest Area basically at the same time or within a short period of time of the opening of the new rest area. And we'll have all the signing on the interstate as well on, as well as on 287 for both sites. Let's see, it's going to be an MDT facility, so it's our requirement, it's our responsibility to maintain this facility. It obviously not, wouldn't be yours. Let's see, irrigation, so we'll have low, usually we, we only require minimal irrigation simply because we don't want to be in the, you know, we're not in the business of maintaining landscaping, but we still, we don't want to, you know, an ugly facility. We want a, a nice looking facility. And that's part of the selection is actually, you know, we spend a lot of time reviewing these proposals and the architectural rendering and you'll see all this stuff, the architectural rendering, renderings, the, you know, basically a summary of the maintenance requirements. But we do give credit to pleasant looking facilities that, you know, we're not looking for, we're not looking for the Taj Mahal. We don't want copper siding or anything like that. We need to be able to have, it needs to be reasonable and somewhat utilitarian, but on the flip side, we want to make sure that we have a nice looking facility that, you know, we can, it sounds weird, but to say this, to be proud of in a sense. Because we, you know, we get feedback from the public. Some people actually drop names in there and say, hey, this is a really nice looking facility. We've seen that happen. The, the facility is going to follow our normal process to where we actually have one stall per person. So one person goes into the stall or unless it's a family stall, in which case, you know, parents might want to take their little kids in and change diapers or whatever. But they will be walkable, they'll be, it'll be security conscious. We will also have, visibility is a big, big deal. No hiding spots. We, security is a huge deal for us. They will be required to provide a state-of-the-art security system. Again, these are all things that I'm sure you, you as commissioners would be very interested in hearing. The, again, this kind of gets into some, delts into a bit of the detail in regards to water, wastewater, stormwater collection. The details on structural, electrical, mechanical, those types of things, I chose not to send over to you, but if, if there's any interest whatsoever in having this data, I can certainly share it with you. As well as, you know, ultimately, at some point, if you, if you choose or designate someone who would want to be an advisor to the department or advisors, if you want more than one, we will give you a copy of a, we will give you copies of the technical proposals, the two technical proposals, as well as the full, our request for proposals. Again, it's a little bit, it's, it's a fairly lengthy document. We can certainly walk you through, you know, the things that you might be more interested in, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. I again, wanted to make sure that you have this in front of you. And the reason I called you is because it actually happened to me on a project recently on Stevensville to where we were requiring that utilities be relocated and that the contractor and design build teams, before they even got the project, went and talked to the utility companies. Boy, the utility companies weren't all, weren't at all happy with me because we never really realized that the burden on them, on their staff was more than they had the time to handle. And so we wanted to, we're making a conscious effort to make sure that you're not surprised. And again, you put in as much work as you feel is necessary or you have time for, it's really up to the design build teams to prove to us that they've got a facility that, that will meet all the requirements. If they don't, then if they can't prove that to us, then more than likely, they're not going to get selected. If they get into the project and they find they can't meet the demands, then they're going to have to figure out a way to make that happen. We do have the ability to terminate contracts if necessary, if they cannot come to an agreement on, when they, before we give a release for construction, we have to make certain that they're geotechnically, water, wastewater, traffic, that they can meet all the requirements. If they cannot meet those requirements, we come to an impasse. At that point, then we would probably terminate and go to a second firm or figure out something. But before they start, before they break, they're, they break ground on this project, they have to, again, I keep saying it, but they have to prove to us that, just like any other development, that they can meet those requirements and your requirements. Anyway, Beth and Darren and Eric, do you have any, did I miss anything?
I think you covered it all, John. I can't think of anything else.
Do you guys have questions or, I mean, boy, lay it out there.
John, this is Daryl. I guess I really don't have anything at this time. I guess as this progresses, you'll keep us posted and we appreciate you bringing us in at this phase so that we are informed. So thank you for that.
Okay. So I have a question for you and I don't know much about the area. I have heard that, excuse me, Rickert and Dowell have made, you know, they've been involved with this process longer than this was a design build project. They've done a lot of preliminary work. But we, we've heard from them that there, there are some planned developments to the east of 287, north of the interstate. Is that public knowledge or is that something you could share with us?
Yes, it is public knowledge and we can share it with you. It is a, a TED district and so they, they are planning to build a wastewater treatment system. Bridger Brewery will most likely be our anchor tenant at this point and...
Who is that?
Bridger Brewery out of Bozeman.
Okay.
And so they're, they're involved in that and the idea of the, of the TED district is as the property sells, the increase in the tax revenue helps to build the infrastructure within the system. So it doesn't require any, any taxpayer funding to develop the, the project. So that's, that's, that's the, the design or the idea behind that.
Now, do you think there, because this is, this wastewater loads could be, you know, more than a normal residence? Is that, I mean, I guess, I'd have to assume that the engineer is going to be working with the, the site developer to make sure that there's capacity?
Yeah.
And you guys are going to have...
I think there'll be plenty of capacity. The nice thing about the system they have chose is that it's a modular system. So as capacity demands increase, they just simply add another module.
Uh huh.
So, yeah, I think that that system will easily be able to handle it.
Okay. All righty. Well, I'm glad we could get this out in front of you. If you wouldn't mind letting us know if you have, I'll tell you what I can do for you. I can send over a copy of the request for proposals, unless you don't want them at this point in time. But as we get closer to the point where technical proposals are being delivered, I would like to, again, if this is all predicated on you guys wanting to do this and participate in that selection process, if you could let me know who that person or persons are and we'll get copies of the technical proposal, or the RFP over. Just kind of an FYI, this, the, the, the people who are currently proposing were invited to propose based upon their pre-qualification. We're not opening up anybody, this RFP to anybody at all else besides those folks. So, you know, if we got three proposals, for some goofy reason, someone got a copy of the, the RFP, we would obviously not even open or entertain that third one. But the, be that as it may, I just want to let you know that so it will only be two people. Again, confidentiality is, is really critical. One of, and that was actually, the genesis of that really actually came from the firms themselves asking us as the agency to contact the resource agencies to make sure that, you know, let's say Dowell comes in and they got this really slick system and then a week later, WGM walks in the door and we just want to make sure that what was shared with Dowell isn't shared with WGM because that could kind of taint that process. But I, I don't need to, I don't probably need to say that.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. If you'd let us know who those people are, that'd be great. So, and thank you for, for listening in. If you have any questions, I think you know how to get ahold of me. We'll be glad to answer.
All right. All right, before you go, I guess I'll go around the room here. Nicole, do you have any questions?
Um, not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you though.
Mike?
No.
All right. I think Commissioner Olbert's on her own computer, so. All right, nothing from us then. John, thank you very much.
Oh, you're certainly welcome. Yeah. Have a great day, you guys.
All right, you too.
Goodbye.
Okay. All right, well, we've got some of the bugs worked out. I think it worked, not too bad, huh?
So they're going to have to work this. Don't know if I can audio this.
Oh, yes.
Okay, we'll end stream this really quick. No, and I'll show you guys.
Where you found...